Good evening. Today is Tuesday, December 6th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, could you take a roll, please?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
City assessor.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. I'm in the middle of losing my voice, so Heather is going to read the agenda for us, so you don't have to listen to me this whole time.
Okay, public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items? Please limit your comments to five minutes. Do we have any citizen comments? Seeing none. Consent agenda: All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Unfinished business, we have none. The Michigan Department of Transportation, presentation of upcoming projects in and/or impacting the city of Manistee. There we go. This one?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jim Johnson. I'm the construction engineer for the Traverse City TSC office. And I wanted to present the project that we have coming up, the Baskiel Bridge. It will be in 2023 and 2024. So I'd like to give a kind of a PowerPoint presentation on that. On the first screen, I wanted to also introduce, which is not here tonight, Melzar Coulter. He's our assistant construction engineer. So if you hear that name, that's he'll be also assistant with the project. And Krista Phillips is here with us. She's our operations engineer for our office as well.
Is this microphone on?
Should be.
All right, okay. Didn't sound like it. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm awfully soft-talking, so I'll be a little loud. And on the slide, as you mentioned, as it's mentioned there, our names are there, but also just a picture showing the different regions. And more so, we obviously work in the north region. That's the red color there. The project description is it's a historical Baskiel Bridge. Some of the items that we'll be working on is the replacement of the deck, the approaches, structural repairs, rust removal, we're doing full painting, substructure patching, electrical and mechanical improvements. And the project is about close to 13 million, and the project has been awarded to Milbacher and Sons. And that was just recently done in November. We're still in the early stages with that. We still have not met with them. They're still going through the award process through the state. I'm guessing probably early in 2023, just, you know, maybe March, February, March, we'll start our pre-construction-type meetings with them and get more of a construction schedule from them. This next slide is really the meat of the presentation, and it has to do with the scheduling for the bridge. There's a lot of information there. I also passed out to the city council the more of a blow-up of that. And the important things to look at on there are where it defines the roadway closed and the roadway open. There's two areas. One is, as you see there, it's about the third line item down from about July to September. And then there's also another one in the year 2024 from around January, I'm sorry, around February to April. Those are the times that the detour is going to be in effect for the project. So the bridge will be worked on with single lane closures, and there'll be a point where the bridge will be fully shut down, open, so we can do work on those activities that are shown to the left of the schedule. And it'll be reopened, and then it'll be closed again that following year in 2024. This slide is basically just a blow-up of those major items of work for the schedule. They're on the left hand of the schedule that was handed out. Kind of gives the start and plan end dates for those items. And basically, those are your major items of work. So we do have, like, lead time that has to do with the overall fabrication of certain items, which they'll begin the ordering process now. And it goes into, you know, the first item, obviously, is the deck replacement. We'll go through there, and we'll work all the way down to the painting of that structure. While those two roadway areas, when they're shut down fully, when the bridge is shut down, there will be detours and plays. This is, there'll actually be two detours, one for kind of major commercial, major traffic to get around, and the other one will be local. So this one is, as you come into town, you will be directed down M-55 to Stronach Road and over. And that will bypass the project. The important thing on this slide is, on the left there, the full detour, it's defined by those time periods in our maintaining traffic special provision in the contract docs. And it gives them the ability, the contractor, to select a 70-day period within that timeframe. So even on your schedule, we show that area. It'll still be less than that area, but once they submit their schedule, they'll more define how their work items will be in that area. So as an example, the first one is from July 15th to October 14th. They have the ability to do a 70-day lockdown or shutdown for that point. And then the second one is from January to March, and that will allow a 50-day. And then beyond that, there will pretty much always be a single lane closure for the project. This slide is nothing more than just the aerial shut-off that kind of shows the road names to kind of give a better feel for that. And then, as you come into town, north and south, there's also local detour, which is shown there, which comes down Monroe Street, down Maple, and back to First. And to just kind of talk through it just a little bit more, as you're heading northbound, you are able to come down First, hit Maple, and then go out Memorial Drive. There's kind of a shorter route to maneuver people to keep, trying to get people through town without going through as much as possible. And then, obviously, coming southbound, as I discussed before, just coming down Monroe to Maple and back to First Street. And once again, just denotation on the slides there, those day allotted periods for those time of the year. And once again, nothing more than the road names on there. We also do have pedestrian detour set up, as denoted there. And the intent is still to get pedestrians to be able to maneuver around for the city there to get from one side to the other. There's the other slide. There are other accommodations that are set throughout at different areas in the community and outside to do more wayfinding, to allow people to understand what's going on, to give them an opportunity to take different routes before coming into town. And those are the locations where those signage will be placed. And this is just something we want to put in there. It was just kind of neat. You get that way sometimes when you're an engineer. This is about all you get for being fun, you know? From 1933, this is a hand-drawn sketch of the bridge that we had in our archives. And they did utilize this to doing the final design. They went ahead and constructed it into CAD standards now. That's what helped them to do the rehab. So basically, that's what I have in regards to the detour. We are intending, like I said, to have a pre-con meeting. Once we do that, I'll get a better feel for when the contractor will actually be doing their work tasks through that period of time. My intention is to share that with the city, and I will provide updates as needed. And I did talk with Jeff McCullough this afternoon, and we thought we could be the conduit between MDOT and the city and make sure we get you the information that you need when you need it. And you'll obviously be invited to, the city will be invited to those meetings as well to discuss that stuff. I do have two other slides that have to do with upcoming projects for the next five years. And I'd be better at describing those for you. And then, after that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. And if you would allow, I'd answer any questions too from the public if needed, so.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us on your agenda today. This particular slide here is also a handout that we gave to all the council members, because it's a lot to look at on a screen. This is our entire seventh county area that we cover, but we're going to focus, oops, wrong way, sorry, just tonight on what's right near the County of Manistee in the vicinity, which probably more interests to you folks. So the project that Jim was just talking about is our Baskiel Bridge. That's listed as number 2301 in brown, so I won't go too much into that. There are two more projects in the vicinity in 2023. One is the concrete pavement area. South of the city is going to have basically a repair project done to fix the bumpy concrete joints that are down there. That should only be a week or two project under flag control, where there's a, you know, the stop-go paddles, hopefully not too disruptive to traffic down there at the south end of town. And so we should be in and out on that one. Another, the other one marked 2308 is just north of the county line. Just so you're aware that that's there, it's a chip and a fog seal. So that one should be quick as well, probably just a couple of days of flagging. So that's for the MDOT roads. That's what's going on in 2023. The next time MDOT will be back is in 2025 along M-55 in the Wellston area, and a little bit outside your area, but we'll be doing pretty significant, about seven miles of overlay. And that will take a little bit longer, because we have to do, you know, raise the road two inches, we have to buffer it out on the side. So it takes a little bit longer to do that. And then the next time, and you'll be hearing from us many, at many midpoints in between, because in 2027, we're basically reconstructing through downtown Manistee. So we're going to be working very, very closely with your staff, mostly Jeff and your engineers, Spicer Group. And we'll be coordinating with the city. We're going to incorporate your water main project into our design, a replacement of water main. So that's the light blue colors, 2703 and 2704. We're going to be doing our construction in 2027, but the design will start soon. And so we will get our designers on board. When we'll start having more meetings, I'm sure we'll come in front of the council. We'll have public meeting sessions on the design side and the construction side. We haven't started yet that, so I don't have very many details, other than we're going to be doing this in 2027. And that's basically probably going to take the entire construction season from spring to fall, because we're going to be ripping up the road entirely, doing all new storm drains, new water for the city, all new curb and gutter, new pavement, et cetera. And Lord knows it, it needs it, needs some attention. So, yeah, with that, that's basically our presentation. Does anybody have any questions for Jim on the Baskiel Bridge project or myself?
I have a question. We have the truck route. Does MDOT maintain that at all?
Your city truck route?
Yeah.
I don't think we maintain that, not only the portions, well, we actually contract with Manistee County to maintain in our roads for us.
Okay, because I know it's going to be used a lot more with the detour, and it's in really bad shape.
Okay. Yep. Spicer did show us what that truck route was, so I'm aware of what you're talking about from the Morton Salt Plant, correct?
Yeah, it goes Morton Salt and then around Wreath Riley, all the way around the lake. And there's, you hit that bottom dip, and it's just getting worse and worse.
They did have some ideas for how to mitigate some of the traffic turning volumes on the detour route. And we think that if we speak with the managers of the companies that we can ask if they will follow a specific route, maybe one that has the better pavement, that might be effective for the duration. But if we find something's falling apart during construction, we can work with the city on what to do about that. And also, you know, we can ask them to change routes, too, if that's what we need to do. So we'll work very closely with, our construction team will work very closely with Jeff and whoever else we need to, to make sure that we're not tearing apart your roads during the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for having us today.
Thank you.
Consideration of local government approval from Michigan Liquor Control Commission liquor license for the Hampton Inn located at 101 South Lake Shore Drive, Manistee. 6:00 PM Hospitality Partners LLC is applying to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, MLCC, for a new Resort B Hotel Class C liquor license for the Hampton Inn located at 101 South Lake Shore Drive, Manistee. Part of the application includes a local government approval. The city police chief has reviewed the request and has no objections to the approval. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution supporting the request from 6:00 PM Hospitality Partners LLC for a new Resort B Hotel Class C liquor license.
One second. Can I ask a question on that? So, just thinking in my mind, with its location close to the beach, how does that work as far as if somebody was to purchase alcoholic beverages at the hotel or the restaurant? Can they take them from that facility out over to the beach? I would assume not, but I guess I just was wanting clarification.
Well, there's a couple of different ways in, I was going to say, we can both, there's a couple of different ways that is approached. There is, you know, cocktails-to-go program right now that the MLCC has in place, and there's also social districts. I personally, as I stand here today, I do not believe that's part of a social district.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So they could get cocktails to go, which would be like if you went to a local restaurant and you got margaritas to take home with your tacos, or something like that. But I don't know the exact rules on the beach, so I don't know.
It depends on the license type. So what we do is research the license type and see what the parameters are, and make sure they're in compliance. If we know any violations, we report to Liquor Control.
So with this particular license that they're asking for, could they, could that allow for alcoholic beverages on the beach?
I don't have that answer right offhand. I don't believe it does, but I can research that and get back with you.
Well, it looked like you had a market that you would sell, just kind of cocktails to go. So if they're not glass, they could take them to the beach.
Yeah, so I was going to speak to that a little bit, too. But, so 6:00 PM, I'm Peter Buchma. I'm with 6:00 PM Hospitality Partners, and I'm here representing 6:00 PM, as well as Hotel Ventures Manistee, the property owner. We're asking the council to approve a Resort B Hotel C, sorry, a Resort B Class C liquor license for the use of the hotel, for use in, for the services at the hotel. The request is really not any different than any other hotel in the state in the way they typically operate. And I'm using, I guess, air quotes on that, because there's, I'm sure nuances. But the operation would include a market and sundry shop, so the little two-door cooler that is adjacent to the front desk, a patio bar, and then also the restaurant on the fifth floor, and then also allow for a portable bar for events onsite. There are additions that you can get to the license, speaking specifically to that question, to do off-site catering. Right now, I do not see us doing off-site catering, but if there's a demand and we're requested, maybe we'll go down that road at a later date. But at the end of the day, cocktails to go is an add-on to our license. So yes, you could get rum runners typically in a sealed container with our logo on it. There's a sticker, and there's rules and parameters around it, or, you know, a six-pack of beer to go to take on your boat to go fishing. But the consumption on the beach, I would have to, I personally do not know the rules on the beach to allow alcohol over there or not. So I would have to defer to the.
Alcohol on the beach is more derivative with bottles. Bottles with beer on the beach.
Okay.
I think, maybe, hopefully I can add some clarity. You're talking about selling a product to go, similar to a six-pack, not somebody walking out of the bar with a drink.
Right, right.
If that adds some clarity, what we're talking about.
Yeah, I guess I know there's a social district downtown, and I get that that's, you know, one thing. But I guess I was a little concerned, let's say, if somebody's maybe had too much to drink, they get a beverage from the hotel, whatever, they decide they're going to go over to the beach. I guess I'm just trying to make sure that there wouldn't be potentially some problems. We're still going to enforce the.
It would be, yeah, liquor control for officers doing liquor inspections, make sure it's not over serviced. And that's how we regulate those. And if any violations, we report back to Liquor Control as a way to regulate sales.
So I get the to-go. That makes sense to me. But, so, I guess buying a glass, they wouldn't take.
Have to regulate that. And if a guest was noncompliant, then they would probably reach out to the police department to assist with that. But, yeah, it was not our intention that they would walk, you know, to vodka sodas.
The close vicinity could open up some doors.
It's very attractive, in theory. So, yes, you could get a six-pack to go, or, you know, to go, but that, those rules are very specific versus the social district where it's, you know, more of an open beer. And we'll go buy some jackets. I'll post. Today sounds really good. But, yeah, so our use is the market slash sundry shop, the patio bar, the restaurant upstairs, and then a portable bar for events is essentially what we're seeking, so.
The problem you're going to have is that the people are drinking at the tables outside that you're going to have, and you can't hardly regulate it when they all of a sudden walk off and go across to the beach.
It's something that we're, it's not a common problem, but it's something we have to pay attention to.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Consideration of establishing 2023 poverty exemption guidelines as approved by the State Tax Commission. A resolution needs to be adopted for the 2023 assessment cycle, which has the updated income levels published by the State Tax Commission. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establishing 2023 poverty exemption guidelines.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Take roll.
Take roll? Councilmember Bachman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Consideration of establishing how property tax exemptions are granted as required by the State Tax Commission. A resolution needs to be adopted, which addresses how tax-exempt property exemptions are granted as required by the State Tax Commission, which will be part of the new audit they will conduct on municipalities. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establishing how property tax exemptions are granted.
I'll make that motion.
No discussion?
Yeah.
Take roll. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Multitasking here. I got to figure out where I'm at. Okay. Consideration of establishing how personal property tax is handled as required by the State Tax Commission. A resolution needs to be adopted, which addresses how personal property tax is handled as required by the State Tax Commission, which will be part of the new audit they will conduct on municipalities. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establishing how personal property tax is handled.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Who was the second?
Erin or I. You can choose.
Okay.
Molly, how is that established?
We do a personal property canvas, and most of it's going to be exempt now under the small business, the $80,000. But then, that's been expanded to the $180,000. So most personal property will be gone. The EEMPs are all gone in '23. So this is just a paperwork shuffle that the state of Michigan wants to see.
Anybody else? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Molly.
Consideration of establishing how access to the local assessor is available to the public as required by the State Tax Commission. A resolution needs to be adopted, which addresses local assessor availability to the public as required by the State Tax Commission, which will be part of the new audit they will conduct on municipalities. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establishing how access to the local assessor is available to the public.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I would appreciate it if you'd walk us through how that's going to look.
Well, it's going to look almost exactly like it looks now, because all of the phones are forwarded to the Cadillac office. So they call the local number. It's picked up in Cadillac. And then we're here one day a week. And then if a taxpayer wants to meet, we come and we do our work. And then the biggest change is that we have a brand-new assessment change notice that the state rolled out this year, that it has, where under the Assessor Reform Act, I'm supposed to meet with taxpayers and be available to taxpayers before March Board of Re... That it has, where, under the Assessor Reform Act, I'm supposed to meet with taxpayers and be available to taxpayers before March Board of Review. So that before the first Tuesday following the first Monday in March, when I turn the roll over, I will have made changes. And so we have to have verbiage on there that I am available, and it will be through the number here. They'll call me at Cadillac, which that's just what I've been doing now. So we're very available, but some assessors are not, and that is why we have this. So it's for us, it won't be any difference. We will not see any difference. It's just that when we were in the class, they said you needed to have point A, point B, point C, point D done, and that's what we did.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of text amendment to the zoning ordinance. For the approval of language developed to provide for the allowance of places of public assembly large to be a special use that does not require key street frontage in the C-3 district, and also to require parking for this use within the C-3 district. After consideration, the Planning Commission does not recommend the approval of this request to council. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance Z-2205 text amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Hearing no motion.
Katie, could you explain to the council about how the Planning Commission went about their decision on this?
Yes. So the Planning Commission did, you know, spend quite a bit of time on this. We had two, we had our meeting with the public hearing, which they tabled the decision. They carried that over to their next meeting and decided to hold a work session. And through all of the discussion, the general consensus was that they felt that, you know, it is appropriately designated under the current zoning ordinance. We do have places of public assembly small as an allowable use in the C-3 district. Places of public assembly large is, you know, allowable in other districts in the zoning ordinance. And one of the main comments from one of the commissioners was that they were not comfortable with the, there's no maximum capacity for places of public assembly large. And it was just felt that that was not fitting for, you know, anywhere within the C-3 district. They wanted to keep that remaining on the key street segment. So I know it's not typical for, you know, we don't see it all the time, that the Planning Commission does not recommend a zoning ordinance amendment. This was pursued by an individual. So, you know, it's a little bit more common that it's a toss-up when it's an individual proposing an amendment rather than the Planning Commission, you know, taking that directive from city council or telling staff to pursue something with this zoning ordinance. Yeah, so that's, they, they tried to pursue this on their own. And yeah, like I said, the commission definitely deliberated. They, they thought about it. We took three meetings. And ultimately, it was decided that they felt this was not a, an appropriate amendment. So they recommended to not approve this language for the zoning ordinance.
Kind of event might be considered under a large, what, what would we see in something?
Let me see. I think I do have the definition here. And I can go through that for you, because it does give a few examples. And places of public assembly, the overarching definition is building structures and grounds, including theaters, churches, auditoriums, sports arenas, lecture halls, and other similar facilities intended for commercial or non-commercial entertainment, instruction, worship, or similar activities involving assembled groups of people numbering more than 30. And the places of public assembly small wants the use to have either less than 2,000 square feet in gross floor area or a total seating capacity of no more than 100 in the largest room intended for public assembly. And places of public assembly large is greater than 2,000 and more than 100 at the capacity for the largest room intended. So there, you know, there is no limit. It's just more than 100.
Who would be negatively impacted if we pass this ordinance? Who could you think of who would be negatively impacted?
I don't think it's necessarily a direct negative impact. It's more so just, is it, is it appropriate for, for this area in town when we already allow for it in other areas? So I know parking was a big concern and a big part of the discussion with potentially allowing for this use. So that was one of the initial kind of amendments to the original request, was that, you know, if we do allow this, we should include parking as a requirement. And the more it was discussed and when the discussion evolved, you know, seeing that places of public assembly small is already allowable and looking at the parcel sizes and the, you know, capacity for parking. I mean, we can always tear down buildings and create parking lots and such, but in the current layout of downtown, you know, overall, they just felt that it wasn't all that fitting for, for what we have down there.
Still not clear who's gonna show up at our meeting and say you just shafted me by changing the ordinance. Is there some place specific, is there some reason this is even in front of us? Why did he?
Yeah, so the, the original request was by Ralph Carroll, who is the property manager of the PNC building. And he was requesting this specifically for that building. And I had, you know, when we're working through this, we have to remind ourselves that when an individual is pursuing an amendment, although it would benefit them particularly, when we amend the ordinance for a use for a district, we have to think about how it will affect everyone. It's not really, even though that specific person is requesting it, it doesn't mean it's only going to benefit that one individual. So, you know, in these instances, the applicants are aware that they're paying a fee and they may not get the outcome that they were looking for. So, I mean, that is transparent from the beginning of this applicant.
Don't approve this. Is it gonna say, is it gonna be told, sorry, that was approved anymore?
No. If this is not approved, the ordinance remains as is, as it is currently written.
Okay.
So I have two questions.
Yes.
This individual, has he indicated what his intent would be behind that building? Have it be a large gathering?
Um, yes. His intention was to hold, I think his main idea was wedding events. And then if, you know, if the market dictated something different, he was open to ideas, but his main idea was wedding events. And at this time, he still would be able to hold that type of event up to 100 people, under the places of public assembly small. So.
So is this something that we have to say is completely off the table? Or I know you said the concern was that there isn't a maximum number. Is that something we could look into, putting a maximum number if we allowed this?
Um.
In the future?
Yeah.
For that, like, under, I, I get maybe a little bit when you say, like, wedding venues. I get that people could be looking for a venue. I don't know if people would choose that venue. I mean, everybody chooses something different based on their preference. But is there a way we could approve it if there was a maximum number for wedding venues?
Um, yes. Procedurally, I'm not 100%. I may have to look into if that would need to be sent back to the Planning Commission if there was amendments or if to the request, or if city council can just, you know, pursue that and approve it as amended. Now that I'm thinking out loud, it seems that you would have the authority to do so. But yeah, that would just be a little bit more involved to digging into this and seeing, you know, if, if you wanted to pursue the amendment, how you'd want this language to look. And that's kind of how the Planning Commission initially started looking at it with the applicant only requesting for this use to be allowable. And they said, well, what if we require parking? And then, you know, the discussion kind, kind of came full circle that, you know, let's just leave it as is. We have, you know.
A fire code that would, would limit the number of occupants in a particular building?
Um, yes. That gets into something kind of beyond zoning. All of, all of the commercial businesses have to have fire inspections, so.
So if you had a wedding venue and you wanted 300 people, and the fire code said you're going to have 200.
Right.
Would you be limited to 200?
Yes.
By fire code? Wouldn't have to really mess with that too much if we allow, fire code set that standard, correct?
Correct, to an extent. So, I mean, the fire code can trump the zoning ordinance, but you wouldn't be able to. Yeah, I mean, in, in the end, you would have to meet the zoning ordinance, but the fire code may tell you that you can't even, you know, fulfill whatever maximums that the zoning ordinance dictates.
Number of exits and.
Right.
Fire suppression, all that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Who played into that? So.
Yes.
Might be a problem that's solved itself.
Yeah, and I know that this individual had reached out regarding fire code prior to his request to make sure that it wasn't a lost cause from the beginning, that he could have a higher capacity than what is currently allowable. But yeah, those are definitely factors that come into play.
Isn't the, um, isn't the building still for sale?
That I don't know 100%.
If it sells next week, I mean, he's just the property manager.
Right. And then the idea that really it's allowable for everyone. So even if that never comes to fruition in the PNC building, it would be opened up for any other business that is not on key street frontage within the C-3 district.
It doesn't affect, like, schools or, like, the armory that put in more than 100 people?
Uh, no. Existing uses under the existing zoning ordinance that are legal allowable uses or even grandfathered non-conforming uses are allowed to continue. Even if this amendment was approved and there were existing establishments that operated under a use that was amended so that it was no longer allowable, we do have grandfathering in the zoning ordinance, so they could continue on until they don't meet those standards.
I don't know where we go from here since there was no motion.
Without a motion, I think the matter, you just pass it.
Tabled.
Okay.
Some future date.
And then item H, we have moved to the December 20th city council agenda. So we will go on to consideration of committee appointments. And at this time, the mayor could take action to make various council committee appointments.
I didn't do very many changes. I just put people in Mick Shemansky's spot, which is Jim Grabowski on the ordinance committee, Seth Pratt to take my place on the Parks, or Sands Park Control Board, and Linda Beaton on the audit committee. And then everything else, the same. You don't want me to read all those to you?
No, no. Can you, who was it on the ordinance again?
Jim Grabowski.
Okay. And now we have at this, we don't need a motion on that, no. And at this time, the city manager could take action to make appointments to the city personnel committee.
I'd like to keep the personnel committee the same. Councilman Dave Bachman, Mayor Jermaine Sullivan, and Mayor Protem Jim Grabowski.
We need a motion.
And so the other personnel advisory board, just for Councilman Pratt, personnel advisory board may be appointed by the city manager with the approval of city council to make investigations and recommendations to the city manager.
And we do, we do need a motion on that one. So.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Okay. And now it's time for a report from the city clerk and the harbor commission. I will go first. So it's time for me to report on the city clerk's department. I can't believe it's time for this again. It's been a year already. So I'll make this quick, though. Let's see here. So the department has not changed at all. It's still myself. As a city clerk, I've been with the city for 22 years. And Laura Lorraine is the deputy clerk and also does payroll. She's been with the city for five and a half years. And then we have currently about 35 election inspectors who work with us for the elections. They are certified through training every two years. They just did that certification this year, so they are now certified for two more years. The county does do that training for us. And we did it this year, both virtually and in-person. We offer it now, which helps out a lot. So in, a lot of people will do the virtual training, but they'll do it here. I'll offer either here in council chambers or downstairs, but it just makes it a little bit easier. We don't all have to go at one time. Laura Lorraine, deputy clerk, did receive her certified municipal clerk certification through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, which is a great honor. I was really happy that she got that this year and would like to congratulate her on that. That's, that's a really big accomplishment, so. And this year, she and I, we did a little bit of training this year, not as much as we have in past years, but it was, we were busy. So we split the Michigan Association Municipal Clerk Summer Conference. She did the master class, which was held on, I think it was Monday or Tuesday. It was an all-day class. And then I attended the rest of the conference. So we kind of, we split that up, so I could still do council meeting. And then she went to the, her annual payroll conference that's held down in, I think, Battle Creek. And then I just got back. I was last week at the Clerk's Master Academy in Mount Pleasant. This is a list of just some of our department responsibilities. I'm not gonna go through them all, but I've just listed a few there. There's too many really to list, but of course, elections and voter registration are really our, our main things that we tend to focus on all the time. But then, of course, accounts payable for me, payroll for her, council, meetings, minutes, boards and commissions, all that good stuff. 2022, we faced redistricting after the 2020 census. I did provide the 2020, or the census numbers from 2000, 2010, and then 2020, just so that you could see the comparison of the three different census. And council, we did not need to change our precincts, but we did update, as you remember, we did update the districts between five and six just to bring the population more equal between those two districts. And then we did that change to coincide with the county and the statewide redistricting. And once that was all done, new voter ID information cards were sent out to all registered voters, so they were aware of those changes. And this year, we had two elections. So we had the August primary, where we saw in precinct one about a 35% turnout. Precinct two had a, almost a 23%, and then in November, precinct one had a 63% and precinct two was right around 49%. And it was busy, and I can't thank Laura Lorraine, deputy clerk enough, and all the election inspectors. I could not do the elections without them. They are very much appreciated. Next year, we have possibility of elections in May and August. I don't foresee us having anything. Then I don't think there's anything school-wise coming up. You know, I think we've pretty much done all of our milages, so I don't see anything. I mean, there's always something that could come up. But we definitely will have our November 7th city council and anything else that may, you know, be added to that. But those are definitely three possible dates, or three dates that we have. And so we're gonna focus in 2023 on preparing for '24. '24 is gonna be a big year for us. And with the passing of proposal two, that's gonna cause a lot of changes for us. We're gonna have to prepare for that. And a few of the changes that could greatly impact our office is the requirement of nine days of early in-person voting, the voter right to a single application to vote absentee in all elections. And then, of course, the military and overseas, now, once their ballot can be postmarked by election day, we must still count that up to, I think it's six days after the election. So those are all, all changes that, we don't really know how that's going to work. We don't know exactly, you know, the logistics of that. What's, especially with the nine days. with the nine days of early in-person voting, there's a lot of things that are going to change, you know, having, who's going to, to run those precincts, where are they going to be, you know, how, how's it going to go? So those are all things that clerks over the next year are going to be doing a lot of training and trying to figure out what the best way is to, to move that forward. So I will definitely update you as more information comes available to us. Last week at my conference, we were all asking questions and the Bureau had no answers for us yet. So they said as soon as they do, though, they will let us know, and I will forward that to you. After the election, we did talk here about, you know, confusion with people when they go to vote and not knowing where their precinct is. You know, if they're in Precinct One or Precinct Two, they get in line, they wait. So last week when I was at the conference, I sat, I had a lot of time to think about, you know, how could I make that easier? And I came up with one idea. Not everybody has a cell phone, but one option, I am going to post these QR codes. I created this QR code to have, I'm going to put it on the doors at the precinct location. Most people have a cell phone. They can scan this. If you, if you scan this with your phone, it takes you to the MVIC site, which is the Michigan Voter Information Center. You enter your name, date of birth, and your zip code, and it will tell you if you're registered to vote, where you're registered to vote, and your precinct. It'll tell you who your clerk is. It'll give you election date, hours, all of that. So this is just one more tool that we will have. I'm also going to have, I think there was an idea of having a sandwich board, I think it was the mayor who said, a large sandwich board with a big map, so it's easier for people to see. I'll have that also for people who don't have a cell phone. But I thought this was just an easier thing. Somebody walking up to the door can quick with their phone, scan it, and see, hey, am I, am I registered here? Should I be here? Should I be somewhere else? Just one more way that I thought it might help and make it a little easier. Moving away from elections, we registered 13 businesses this year in the city, and they're listed here. So that's one other thing we do. And then accounts payable, this is a big part of my job. It's something that, you know, is aside from all the clerk stuff that I do. It's, and it, it does take a lot. It's, it's a lot more than just writing checks. It's getting approvals from various departments, a lot of paperwork to maintain. We do, you know, workmen's, workers' comp audits, miscellaneous reports. To date, 2022, I've processed over 5,200 invoices, over 2,000 checks, automated ACH direct deposits, and EFT payments. With that, I'll take any questions.
I have a question. Why are you paying the, the vendors for the Ramstel Theater?
The Ramstel?
Yes.
So back when I spoke, when I started paying, I think that was, the Ramstel payroll is done through an accountant, but it was decided that we would do the accounts payable in-house here. I think it was an option to do it outsourced or here.
When the city and the RRCA entered into their agreement, probably six years ago now, it was comprehensive. And one of the services that the city was going to provide was to pay their bills kind of as a, in, in-kind type of service. And it works out pretty seamlessly. We were paying the bills for the Ramstel prior to that because we were operating it as a city department. It's just worked out well. We're just a fiduciary for the RRCA.
Well, why can't they do it themselves now? Like, we're putting more on the city clerk and the staff. Why can't the Ramstel pay their own vendors and their?
Well, we have, we have an agreement. That agreement could be revisited. I, as the treasurer of the RRCA, happen to think it works out very well because I can approve stuff here at the same time. It's a city-owned building, kind of look at it as.
Yeah, but it, it goes both ways. Like, when I ask questions about the Ramstel Theater, it's, people are like, oh, well, it's separate from the building, but the city owns the building. So it just seems, I think that we should revisit it and they should be paying their own bills.
And we certainly can. From, from the finance director's perspective and the treasurer's perspective, the system we have now works out very well and is very efficient. But we're, we can revisit that at some point.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to revisit it like before the first of the year so they can find like an alternative to us not paying their bills.
We're not going to be able to do that. We'd have to review the contract and see what the provisions of that are, so we can do that and get back to you.
Okay.
Can we review the contract?
The contract was approved by City Council and it just continues year over year until it's, it's revisited. There's.
But I mean, we haven't, I don't think anybody had this council.
I've seen.
Yeah. I don't, I don't remember who was on council when it was approved.
Linda was.
Are they available in our drop back?
They can be made, it can be made available.
Yeah, you can send it out.
Out up to speed?
Absolutely.
That was the only question I had.
I don't have a question. I just want to make a statement. Your office is wonderful. You guys do a great job. Everybody's very friendly, very supportive of community questions. I hear many compliments from your office.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And now, at this time, Mr. Tom Swedenborg will report on the activities of the Harbor Commission.
Hi. My name's Tom Swedenborg. I am a 23-year resident of the City of Manasty and chairperson of the Manasty Harbor Commission, which is comprised of myself, Ty Cook, Jeff McCula, George Becker, and Mary Lou Midrell. This brings me to one of our concerns. We have two empty positions on this commission. That is two less backgrounds, insights, and approaches to matters that are brought before us. We would very much like to see those positions filled. It's my personal opinion that it would be of tremendous value if we had a member from our vibrant sport fishing industry, that's so much a part of the city's recreation and so dependent upon our harbor. I appeal to the council and to the citizenry in general to promote and fill those two assets, or two seats, please. Our harbor, think about its importance. It is literally at the center of our location, our history, and our future. The timber history, shipping, manufacturing, fishing, and recreation, not to mention the focal point of our stunning vistas and unique harbor, or riverwalk. As to what's been happening with the harbor of late, we began the spring of 2022 with Swodorski Construction Company, putting a few finishing touches on the south side channel revetment that extends all the way from the south, from the stub pier, past the bat house, net shed replica along the riverwalk. This was painstakingly accomplished, sometimes rock by rock, through the summer of 2021. We have, now have a lovely, uniform, and well-protected southern riverbank welcoming boating visitors to our harbor. Huge kudos to a major undertaking and accomplished by a local business. In the summer of 2022, we saw the dredging of the harbor and its approaches, thus protecting deep vessel shipping here for the near future, allowing such shows as the Two Lakers that stacked up at the mouth of our harbor this morning and waited for entry to the delight of hundreds of viewers. Repair of the south break wall has begun and is expected to be finished this spring. Our boat launches have been well-maintained, managed, and utilized as reflected by a 10-year, if not historic, record in revenue. Now addressing the Manasty Municipal Marina. The marina has seen a near total turnover in staffing, including the new main manager, Katie Trivisano. In addition to being the new manager, she is also the DPW clerk. This facilitates communication with the harbor master, Jeff McCula, who is also her DPW director. In a much-needed and continuing effort since the historic seash of April 2018, the final five docks were replaced this spring. These modern docks allow us to adjust the heights as the water of Lake Michigan varies up and down. The construction of a patio to provide a central outdoor gathering area for marina guests has begun and will be finished this spring. Our second major concern is the low occupancy rate of our beautiful marina. Coinciding with this, we are aware of the busy marinas both to our north and south. We understand that a direct course from Ludington around Sobal Point to Frankfort or beyond Point Betsy falls, of course, well to the west of Manasty on or beyond our horizon. For boats to travel east to our port requires extra time and/or fuel. We believe that far too many boaters are simply not aware of the delights that await them here. We offer a modern, beautiful marina, small-town atmosphere, historic downtown, convenient shopping, beaches, restaurants, biking, boating, and sightseeing. As a result, we have entered into a relationship with MS Creative. With the help, help of Mark Sandsted, we hope to put Manasty in the minds of Lake Michigan boaters as a worthwhile destination and bolster the usage of our marina and thereby all the nearby public and private facilities. This would not only bring more revenue to the marina, but our entire city as well. Thank you.
I think it would help. Last year or this year, I went down with a few of the people from different committees, and we interviewed some of the people on the boats. And they sent us a letter saying, you know, like they could use maybe some of those little carts to get to restaurants because it is a little bit, there's nothing close by to them. Now Fricano's open, so that helps out. But they'd like to get someplace else, go shopping, like Myers or something, and they can't get way out there because they have no transportation.
I, I don't understand for sure your question. I, I, we maintain a book that tells them about local restaurants and such, but you were talking about transportation as well?
The people said, you know, they, they didn't know where to go. They didn't have any, any transportation, different things that they were, you know, wondering about if the city could help out with something.
Yeah, we do have a couple of bicycles down there. I, I know in the past, and I'm not sure I advocate this, but I know the staff has run people to grocery stores and such. That's probably taking on a little too much liability and responsibility. I'm not aware of that happening of late. But we, we do not have a lot in the way of transportation made available. You know, I know we have a sometimes taxi service. Beyond that, I'm not sure what we could offer. I, I know there's been a whole change in shopping as far as deliveries from grocery stores and different ways of doing that.
Well, I mean, Dial-Aid doesn't stay open real late. You know, there's a taxi that they could call. I mean, I think we should publish the name so these people can at least get something to go somewhere.
I, I think we should review the, the information they have available in the office there.
I'll send you that letter. I thought that maybe you had gotten it, but I'll send that one.
I, I, no, we, we should read that at our next meeting and discuss it. Please.
Well, I'd like to go down and just talk to the boaters down there.
I think that's an excellent idea, and I, and I do at times myself.
Yeah. I mean, you know, they come from New York. I talked to one from Florida that traveled from Florida, where you come all around, you should get down to Chicago. And it was quite interesting talking to them. They had maps there that showed places where they could go. So it was really helpful.
I think so.
I, I was curious about the fact that Save-A-Lot is no longer open, so there is not a grocery store, because I do know that there were people that used to go dock their boats, and then they either hop on their own bikes that they bring on their boats, and they'd ride over to the grocery store. I'm wondering if you had any feedback on that.
I, I haven't, no. I, I mean, I personally mourn the loss of a grocery store in town.
There are delivery services from Meyer. Hip shoppers deliver groceries anywhere throughout the county, so they could call and do an order, and they'd go right to your boat dock at the ring.
Absolutely. And I, and I guess our information at the marina should reflect that, as, as well as the other services available along those lines.
There's full service of alcohol, everything. Very convenient.
I wanted to thank you and your commission, but I did have a question. You mentioned two openings and potentially looking for somebody who's in the fishing industry or boating industry, and some people came to mind. But what is the requirement to sit on that board? Do they have to live within the city limits?
I, I think we allow one person who has a business within the city but doesn't reside in the city.
I can't remember off the top of my head what the requirement is. I have it in my office, what the board requirements are. We do, I have it advertised. It's in the paper today, actually.
Excellent.
And it is on our website and Facebook page, but it was advertised again today. Applications are due by next Tuesday because it is on the agenda for the 20th. So I've been advertising it monthly, so.
I think the most successful in the past is when other Harbor Commission have recruited people to, to guys that would recruit someone to join your board.
I, I hate to say if I'm not certain, but I'm pretty sure, and, and we have none right now. I, I think the rules allow for, like I said, one person who has a city business but doesn't reside in the city. And, and we don't have someone on the commission like that right now. But, yeah. We've been trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Don.
Two maybe, okay. Concerns and comments. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I would just like to thank the City of Manasty for the wonderful job they did putting on the Sleigh Bell Weekend. A lot of work, a lot of risk. The city manager, Chief Cameron, Chief Glass, were all integral, as well as the Ramstel Theater, in making this a very successful event. And also, again, if it wasn't for our local businesses and corporate sponsors, we wouldn't be able to have an event like this. So I just wanted to publicly thank everyone involved for making a great weekend. Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead and call officials and staff for you? Or do you, you can do it?
Yeah, I can do officials and staff. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank the Sleigh Bell Committee for all their work on, on the parade, DPW, police, fire, all the volunteers for a successful event. Couple of updates on some council requests, so the breakdown of the 180 acres of parks and maintenance. So we're working, Jeff is working on that right now, so we'll have that once that's completed. The detour sign was picked up on Washington Street. Website was updated with the correct name and email address. We also, I'm going to be, haven't gotten a chance to finish the, with the EDA ad hoc committee with the parks, so I'll do that. We sent Councilmember Bachmann the historic district sign ordinance. It looks like it was last updated in 2017.
I got an email on today.
So, thank you. And then, yeah, if the rest of council's interested in a FOIA presentation, we can put that on a study session.
Anybody else on?
Mayor, maybe I can follow up on Councilmember Pratt's question. I looked it up, and two members of the Harbor Commission can be non-residents of the city as long as they either own real estate in the city or are involved in a business in the city.
So if somebody potentially had a charter business that's seasonal?
If the, if the charter business is located somehow and they're, park their boat within the city, sure, yeah.
Perfect.
Anybody else on staff?
Anybody else on staff?
I just want to let council know that our youngest member, General Bydick, just completed his paramedic program and passed all of his hands-on testing. And so he, we're just waiting a state license and he'll start his FTO program. So that'll complete, all eight of us having our paramedic certification.
Perfect.
Thanks.
I've already touched on twice, but I just wondered, are there no major issues or incidents on the Sleigh Bell?
Kind of get a little squirrely and park itself on River Street that delayed the lighting of the tree, but no major incidences, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say as well, it was a great weekend. Wonderful to be involved in all the other aspects of what was going on, and it just makes me proud to be part of the city.
I know I was here last meeting, but are we all done with leaf pickup? I know that was a big issue.
So they were still working through the final, so they'd, they'd done three runs through the city at this point. Well, they're complete, trying to complete a third run through the city, so they've been out there, worked on the north side. I think they're finishing.
They're just going to continue until we get snow, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I just wanted to commend everybody with the Sleigh Bell weekend. Good.
Mr. Gubrowski.
Okay. I wanted to congratulate Chief Cameron for announcing his retirement. Hope you have good luck in the future. The parade was cold, but everybody seemed to enjoy it. I love the chestnuts, so that was good. I saw the boats coming in this morning. I was surprised I happened to be walking down there. Everybody, there was a hell of a crowd down there looking for the people. So also, Mr. Campbell, are they going to work on those restrooms at the Marina because they really need work on? You know, before, before the season starts.
Okay. The painting and the doors.
Lighting is terrible in there, the painting, the doors are hard to open.
Mr. Pratt.
Oh, yeah, I have several. So I have a question. At the last council meeting, it was mentioned that we were waiting on tax information from the Housing Director, Clinton. So we had to ask for an extension. Do you know where we're at with that process?
So, Councilmember Pratt, what we were waiting for was their actual audit. So actually, today I got a copy of their audit that they're going to be presenting to their board next week, and I sent it to our auditors. So I'm pretty comfortable that we'll be able to at least file our audit before the end of the calendar year. Also today, Treasury said we don't issue extensions for audits that are complete except for missing component units unless you don't get the audit within seven days of your audit due date, which is a ridiculous standard because your, our auditors need more time than that. But at the end of the day, I think we'll get our audit in. The presentation for the audit probably won't happen until the first meeting in January, though.
Thank you. Some other questions I had. We weren't closed as a city for Deer Hunting Day, were we?
Fifteenth, no, we were not.
I wasn't aware of that. So I, I guess I just have a question. I know leaf pickup was a large topic of conversation, and that was not necessarily, I think, a concern about individual DPW workers. I think that was a management concern, to be honest with you, or at least from my perspective. So I get when people want to go to Facebook and put things out there. That's totally their right as an employee. But when an employee from the DPW goes out on Facebook and puts that leaf pickup was delayed because of deer season and all of these other things, that doesn't bode well for us. I know I had talked about that, like, with brush pickup. I've called ten times to the DPW since before Halloween, waiting for some brush to be picked up that is right on the end of my alley on Sycamore in between Second and Third. It presents a safety issue. It's kind of hard to oversee, so once snow gets. I was told that'd be picked up. It hasn't yet. And there's no calls back. So if I need to pick it up and move it somewhere else, that's fine. I'm more than willing to deliver those limbs somewhere if that's what needs to happen. But I guess I'm just wondering, like, we can drive around this city and see things. I guess that's, that would be an expectation that I would just assume is part of the job. I don't know how that stuff is getting overlooked. I, I don't know how we're still waiting two weeks later for a breakdown on park property of 180 acres that should be accounted for. I'm glad that we're looking ahead for leaf pickup in the future, but I'm a little concerned that we're saying we need a new piece of equipment to do that. Do we have inventory on the equipment we have? I mean, Councilmember Bachmann brought up, like, something was supposedly broken. We, we should have that to see what equipment do we have, what's being fixed, what do we need to replace, especially when budget things are going to be coming up? I'll be honest, I've heard a lot of comments from the public. Parent drop-off, it's pretty much been a nightmare this week because everybody wanted to talk to me about their, their tickets that they've received. I've encouraged them to call, and I know you said in your email to me that it had to be a case-by-case basis, not disagreeing with that. But I guess I'm wondering what criteria we have in place to determine who gets a voided ticket and who doesn't? Because in my realm, I, I couldn't, I'd have to have that criteria, and I'd have to have it in writing, and it'd have to be a policy, because if not, that could look like discrimination. So I've heard from some people that they contacted and they were told they had to pay theirs, and somebody else contacted and didn't even have to talk to somebody from the Police Department, and their two tickets were voided. So I'm just wondering how we're doing that? Because ultimately, 122 tickets, that, again, isn't the Police Department's issue. They did their job. I'm not concerned with that. That was a communication breakdown on our part. So I have a hard time when I have somebody who reaches out to me in the community who says, I'm laid off from a job, I have young kids, I really can't afford a $40 ticket, yet when I contacted, I was told, no, there's nothing they can do. Yet I can tell you one of my employees, who's not in the same boat, who received two tickets, didn't have to talk to any official through the Police Department. They got a call back from somebody from the Utilities Department, they told me. I don't know if that's true, but their two tickets were voided. And then when I asked about the ordinance, you told me, because as of right now, people are parking on both sides. And, and I'm okay with that, but according to the ordinance, alternate parking should be in effect. And you told me that it's when there's substantial snowfall that relates to plowing, but that is not in the ordinance.
And I think talking with the police chief, and typically we do the, it is triggered by a snow event, and that's when they go out and issue tickets. And it's really to make sure that, I mean, the alt, the goal of the alternate parking ordinance is to make sure that we can clear the streets effectively by having two runs, the plow, one run one day and then another run the other day to completely clear the streets. So in practice, that is when they issue tickets.
That's not the ordinance. So I'm, I'm, I am concerned about that as a citizen and as a council member. I, I think we're opening a can of worms there. And if we're going to avoid some people, we should probably avoid everybody. Is that was my concern when I asked about it? We could have been proactive and instead we're being reactive.
And I think the, the practice has been for people to go to the Police Department. I know when they call the manager's office, we refer them down to the Police Department to talk about what extenuating circumstance led to them not being able to comply with alternate parking. And then it is ultimately up to the discretion of the sergeant to determine if it's substantiated or not.
If I could just add what I can, I, I think we're talking about discretion here. There was a time when we enforced alternate parking after the fifteenth every day regardless of snow, and we got a huge pushback from the public saying, well, why'd you rent me a ticket? There's no snow. So it's the discretion of the officers. When someone comes in and wants to complain about a citation, that's not to be handled by utility. We ask them to direct it to Police Department and to direct it to a supervisor. I mean, we, again, we're talking discretion. I don't know if we can politicize discretion, but we ask our officers to make decisions about arrests, search and seizure, sometimes life and death. In this case, we ask them to make decisions about parking citations, our supervisors. So that's the process.
So is that legal?
Is what legal?
Is it legal not to have criteria and why we would void one person's versus another? I, I'm just asking. I couldn't do that, my job. That would open me up to a lawsuit.
I, I think that certainly officers can exercise discretion in, in depending on the circumstances. And I think you may have said, or Chief Glass said, it's a case-by-case basis. But certainly, I think that you, you could potentially void a ticket considering the circumstances of its issuance for one person and not another. Yeah, I think that, that discretion can be exercised.
You know, I think we forget why the tickets were written anyway. They were ticketed to move your car over if there's a little snow out. I did this 50 years ago, Mr. Bachmann remembers. We were told, don't take it if there's no snow. And I think one winter, we went through hardly any snow, but we didn't write very many tickets. So it comes down to our discretion at that point, too. So it, it's a hard decision then when they come in, they'd have flat tires, they'd have leaf piles, they'd have all kinds of excuses, and you got to make a decision.
I will make a note just to add, I think last time we spoke about this, there was information that our officers issued citations before the fifteenth. I went back and looked, that wasn't the case. We, we weren't issuing citations before the ordinance allowed, just as a side note.
Any update on the clock downtown?
I did talk to Mr. McCula about it. I know he says he has a contractor, they're trying to get them to, to come in and fix the clock.
I think we've been dealing with that clock for a couple of years.
I know.
Trying to get it fixed. He's had a hard time getting somebody up here, and I know I've gone through the time again.
Well, one of the ideas that this employee put on Facebook, and I don't think it's a bad idea, was that he thought maybe it was his job to educate us on what the DPW does and the public. Is there a way, I know, like, we've had housing commission meetings. I believe that Councilmember Lundberg had Mr. McCula do a presentation down at Lighthouse Landings for the condo association. Is there a way he could do an open house with the public that would allow him to do a presentation on what they do in a Q and A session?
It's a possibility. I'd talk to him about that.
Done? Okay. I don't have anything. Thank you for reading the agenda for me because I would have never got through it. So I will take a motion to adjourn.